Good evening. I'm going to call the January 23, 2024, regular meeting of the Town Board to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Present.
Councilmember De La Rata? Absent. Councilmember McPartlin?
Here.
Councilmember Brennan?
Here.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We wish to respectfully acknowledge that Niskiuna is on the traditional lands of the Kanikihaka and the Mohicanak peoples, past and present, and we honor with gratitude the land itself and the peoples who have stewarded this land throughout generations. Moving on to approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the December 19, 2023, regular Town Board meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes from the December 19, 2023, regular Town Board meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any changes to those minutes? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those meeting minutes are approved. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the January 9, 2024, organizational meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes from the January 9, 2024, organizational meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any changes to those meetings minutes? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those meeting minutes are approved. Going to go a little bit out of order this evening because we have a ceremonial resolution. It's Resolution 2024-51. It's sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution honoring Niskiuna High School Unified Sports for recognition and achievement on ESPN's Northeast Honor Roll.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, I would just like to say a few words to honor and acknowledge all those here who are being honored this evening. This ceremonial resolution is, you know, to honor the Niskiuna Unified High School sports program. It's in recognition of their achievement on ESPN's Northeast Honor Roll. So what does that mean? This means that this program was the only one in New York State to achieve this recognition. It is a program that honors human exceptionality by promoting sportsmanship and inclusivity. And as a former special education teacher, I am especially excited for programs like these to exist. Having taught a fully inclusive classroom, I understand the importance of having everyone at the table and having an opportunity to participate in all activities without any barriers. And it's one of the reasons why our community programs is looking to expand our opportunities in town and offer challenge programs. So you all are leading the way, and we're going to look to you as an example as we create programs similar to this one. I would also like to point out that this unified sports program was also awarded the Special Olympics National Banner Unified Champion School Award. This is another example of excellence. So I would just, again, thank you for your work and your efforts in making our community and our world a better place, because that's what you're doing. Anyone else like to say anything?
I'll just say I'm very proud of everyone here. It's taken a lot of hard work, but I've been watching and cheering for you, and you're working hard and you're having a lot of fun. And that's when we learn the best, is when we're playing and having fun and learning from each other. So for the adults and the children that made this possible, we're all working together as one big team, and that's amazing. So thank you.
I'd just like to say congratulations to everyone that's been involved in this program. And, you know, you're the only school in New York State that was awarded this, and that is something to be very proud of. And we here at the Town Board recognize you because we are proud of you, and thank you all for your achievements.
All right, without any further discussion, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. If you all would like to come on up and take a picture as a group, we'd love to have you do that.
Thank you so much.
I saw that.
I'm going to go out of order and do privilege of the floor since it's so long. Is that allowed? It's allowed? Yeah? Beth? I was thinking we could go ahead and do privilege of the floor first since everything's kind of lengthy. We're just waiting for everyone to clear out a little bit. Oh, she lost that on her own. That's really good. Thank you, Chief Koshin. Okay, we'll go a little bit out of order here, so we have some lengthy presentations coming up, and move on to privilege of the floor. I believe we have some residents here who'd like to speak during privilege of the floor, so it is now open for residents to speak. So I have Dana.
I left you a copy of that issue about the franchise fees from Spectrum. And it's obvious that it's a hidden tax that's set by the town that's being passed along to the residents. I asked you last year to please address that. Also, with increasing rates in water, sewer, trash pickup, it feels like being nickelled and dimed and forcing seniors out of Niskiuna. And I'm sure that you're aware of all the negative publicity you've gotten in the paper, and that's very concerning to me. I've lived here for almost 74 years. Thank you.
Joseph? I didn't sign up. Can you still come up?
Yeah, yeah. Linda Rizzo, 22, 29 Fairlawn Parkway. I wanted to address tonight Jason Moskowitz. I want to thank you as a resident, a taxpayer, for being sort of the checks and balances on this board. I think we all know politically and even internationally that absolute power absolutely can corrupt, that a one-party system doesn't work. We see that in the totalitarian governments. So I really want to thank you for being there and for speaking out, and I know it's difficult. I saw what Yasmin Sayad went through when she got no board cooperation at all, even with the budget. In fact, one board member said to me, "It's her budget. Let her sink." Well, it was our budget too. I think Mr. McPartlin would agree. It affected us, the taxpayers. The other thing I want to just briefly discuss is the difference between equality and equity. I certainly believe in equality. Equality is when race, creed, gender, and nationality do not come in play when hiring. Everyone is equal. Equity is an end product, and equity does not always promote fairness. I believe in women being on committees. Certainly, I'm a woman. But as a woman, I don't want to be put on a committee if a man who is doing the job well doesn't get reappointed and I get the spot. I would not accept the position. Equity, as we have seen even throughout this country, and we just need to look at Harvard, has been an absolute disgrace. We have a president who supported Hamas. We had a president at Harvard who plagiarized, and at the same time Harvard defended plagiarism to justify plagiarism. And it wasn't until billionaires or millionaires stood up and said, "We're not no longer donating." So equity does not promote fairness. Equality does. Equity is flawed in many ways. And my last statement is, I believe, Mr. Moskowitz, that process is very important, but process is only as good as the people implementing it. You can still get your desired outcome by a phony process. I know this. I've been in charge, supervised 200 employees. I've done hiring of multiple numbers of people, and I know the importance of a fair process and not having certain people in the background ready to take the job once you finish the process, which is really a phony process. So again, and also, I'm very impressed with the presentation you just had. PL 94142 is very dear to my heart. It's the federal law that started appropriate education for special ed students and school districts. It made those students available and be able to participate in all school district functions. My dissertation was on 94142 and the implementation of that on a state and local level, and I have seen the greatness that came out of that public law, that federal public law. So it's very warm, and it gives me a very warm feeling to see these beautiful children up here doing these wonderful things, and it's all because of PL 94142. Thank you.
Joseph Haffer, 2053 Lexington Parkway. I sent the following email to the supervisor this morning. It says, "By removing Dennis Brennan as Town Historian and filling that position with Rita Augburn-McCall, you have done the town a disservice. Dr. Brennan has a BA, MA, and PhD in history from the University of Albany and has done many years of research, writings, lecturing on the subject. For five and a half years, he has volunteered his considerable talents, and it's time to help make this town a better place to live. You have replaced him with a woman who has limited background in historical research. Ms. Augburn-McCall has a BA in English Language and Literature and an MA in African Studies. That does not make her a historian nor qualified to replace Dr. Brennan. Dismissing Dr. Brennan as you did, in the way that you did, shows no appreciation for his contribution to the town, and is unkind, really unkind. So to justify his removal as Town Historian, you said, 'I am also looking to expand opportunities and improve representation in town government, including for women and people of color.'" From that statement, I'm presuming that you think there might be too many guys on the Town Council, on the Town Councils, and that women are underrepresented. Problem is, at first, you have to apply for a position, and then you're appointed. But women have unlimited time. They have to prioritize. And what are women most interested in? Well, they're interested in children. So where do they go? They go to the Board of Education, the school board over there. Now, on the school board, there are seven members. Six of them are women, one man. Is there discrimination going on over there? I don't know. I don't think anybody cares, really, to tell you the truth. So it comes down to this. The lack of women in town in government and the lack of men at the school board is simply based on their interests, nothing else. The implication that there's discrimination here, discrimination there, is baloney. It's absolutely baloney. So I don't think you have anything to fix, and I don't think you should fix it. Now, the thing with Patrick McPartlin, now, he came up for reassess, reapportment, and he wasn't appointed. So that's your prerogative. You don't have to appoint him. But you don't have to say that he was unprofessional. You have to prove that. That's a no-no. You have to prove that, and I don't think you can. Okay, thank you. I have spoken.
Thank you, sir. Well said. Thank you. Well said.
Are there any other residents who'd like to speak during privilege of the floor? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the comptroller's presentation.
All right, I know everybody has been really excited about this presentation. It's been a long time coming. There's a great deal of analysis that has gone into this, and it is a little bit repetitive. So I'm just going to give you the kind of the upfront. I'm going to go through 2024 in a lot of detail, and then as we go through the follow-on years, I'll just kind of pick out some things that are a little bit different so that we can move through them because it is a bit repetitive. And then at the end, I've got a kind of a longitudinal comparison across the years that I'll spend a little bit more time on. So. Hold on to your hats. This is exciting stuff. So, starting out, we're looking at cost across group categories. The categories were divided basically considering from the least to the most discretionary in terms of budgetary considerations. So debt service includes both long and short-term debt. It is completely non-discretionary. Personnel costs include salaries, benefits, and related costs such as workers' comp, disability, retirement, et cetera. And that obviously is tied directly to staffing levels. Operational costs include all the goods and services needed to conduct daily business. So those costs are tied directly to service provision for all the different things the town does. Capital expenses includes the large purchases such as vehicles, machinery, and larger building projects, things along those lines, and they can be only decreased by either deferring purchases or borrowing, as had been done in the past. Caveats that go along with that, deferring will lead to increased operational costs as your maintenance man-hours to actual useful hours of equipment increases, and borrowing leads to increased debt service. So everything kind of ties in across the different categories to one another. Just before we start actually going through the year, I made several assumptions, and I'll try to point those out as I go through because that's my crystal ball, and it is as accurate as I can make it be, but it's as accurate as the economists I'm reading. So bear that with a grain of salt. What I used for CPI going forward, based on what the Fed's been doing, I assumed a CPI from 24 to 25, going about 5%, then dropping to 4%, and then used 3% for the following years. That's just looking at the Fed has been slowly getting interest rates under control. Things have been slowing down in terms of the growth rates. That seems to be a reasonable assumption as of today. Okay, so 24 is the budget we're working under. So these are good numbers that we're starting with. So debt service for 2024, this includes both the bond anticipation notes, so those are the short-term loans we've taken. Thank you so much. And then the bonding, which is the long-term debt. The bands get rolled over from one year to another. They can be rolled for, depending on what the item purchased was, generally five years, some a little shorter, some up to seven, but we try to keep it at the five-year mark. When we roll them, we have to pay principal and interest as well as the actual cost of basically reobligating that debt. So it's like if you remortgage your house, and you have expenses that go along with that. For the purposes of the tax bill, because water and sewer are utilities, debt service is the only expense from water and sewer that go on the tax bill. Next slide. All right, personnel costs this year in 2024. As you look through the slide, you can see we had salary increases. This year, we actually had all of our unions with negotiated contracts, so we had actual numbers for those increases. The New York State retirement system told us about one month into the budgeting process that for our retirement system for non-police and fire was increasing from 13.1% to 15.2% of payroll. We had no control over that. That was just an added cost that we had to pull into this year's budget, and that'll carry on going forward at that higher rate. The police and fire retirement system went from 27.8% up to 31.2% of payroll. Again, we have no say in this. It's completely managed at the state level, but we are obligated to pay it. Our health care increased this year. We were able to negotiate down to 6%. That was in conjunction with changing our broker. We've been very happy with that change. We're already seeing significantly improved service, and keeping that down at a 6% increase was quite good. So this way, you can see kind of by fund what are actual personnel costs and then our total personnel costs across all the different funds. Go ahead. All right, operational costs. So operational costs include all the non-personnel-related costs outside of capital expenses and debt service. So this is the how much does it cost to actually do business, which brings to light the question of what do you get for your money, which is a good question to be asking. For the general fund, this includes the upkeep of all town facilities and parks, all recreational programming for youth and adults, all administrative functionality of town government, all costs associated with the police department, the justice courts, property assessment and tax collection, licensing and record-keeping, planning and zoning administration and enforcement, the maintenance of sidewalks, road signage, common areas, street lighting, and animal control. That's a lot, and that's all out of the general fund. A lot of these services are actually mandated by the state for the town to keep going with. So we have some flexibility on what we do within our operational costs, but not a lot. Within the highway fund, the maintenance and improvements to all-town roads, including repairs, paving, and snow removal. And for the water and sewer, personnel costs, operations, and capital costs are all covered through the utility bills. So that operational cost of those systems is actually dealt with when people pay their utility bills, so they have some control over their own personal usage because those bills are based on your usage. Next slide. Okay, capital expenses this year. This includes all vehicle and large purchases. Some of the large purchases are large things that we buy in bulk, like water mains and things to have on hand, large purchases that we do. We aren't doing any major building projects right now, but if we were to be doing any kind of a large building project that we weren't bonding for, it would go under these costs as well. This year's capital purchases include, for under the general fund, through the IT department, we're looking at significant improvements to our storage, additional computers, as we've been on a multi-year process to switch out all the town computers. For the police department, this is two vehicles with upfits, transition rifle mounts for the cars, license plate readers, traffic technologies, replacing 15 sites for rifles. Sidewalks, we're using a good chunk to match the CSC grant. Within the park, it's for a stand-on blower, a stand-on mower, zero-turn bagger, a couple more mowers, a truck. more mowers, a truck. Within yard waste, it's a packer truck, and for landfill maintenance, it's the bat wing mower. So these are all those very large purchases we make in the various departments to be able to do what we need to do and replace our equipment as it fails. For the highway, there were quite a few trucks this year. You can see that we are a total of capital expenses just short of $2.5 million, which when you're looking at our debt service, as we're paying that off, that had previously been about $2 to $2.5 million a year in the short-term borrowing. So what we've done over the last two years is move these capital expenses from short-term borrowing that we're paying debt service on, and now it's all incorporated within the budget so that it's actually being paid for as it's purchased. Go ahead. And for people who do better with pictures than a whole lot of numbers lined up, this shows how the actual budget allocations break down percentage-wise across those four categories. What's interesting here is that out of the total, over $31 million up there, only $12,551,440 or roughly 40% of the cost of running the town actually goes on to the tax bill. The remaining costs are offset by either revenue against the general and highway funds or through the utility bills in the water and sewer systems. So, next slide. And now we get to do it all again for 2025. So as we go through these, I'm just going to kind of slowly work through these. Again, debt service, 2025 is our worst year for paying off short-term debt. You can see our total debt service is almost $4.5 million in the budget that we'll be working on starting this summer, and then it'll start dropping off after that. But that plus the combined initial CPI we're expecting to still be high is going to make next year's budget particularly tight. And I'm already thinking about that and starting to plan ahead. Next. Okay, personnel costs. We're going to be in the process of negotiating the CSEA white-collar union contract, so I don't have a number yet for there. When I didn't have numbers for any kind of salary-related information, I used 2.5%. Over time, that's generally what we see averaging across the various contracts, so it seemed a safe number. Health care, we generally assume for planning purposes about a 10% increase year-on-year. They usually initially come to us with a number over that, and then we negotiate a lot and hopefully get it under that, but that's a good planning number. So you can see breaking out, our total personnel costs are starting to creep up close to $18 million. Next. Operational costs. This is where you can see there was the assumed 5% increase for the CPI across all the funds. I hope it's not as high as that. I tend to be a little bit of a pessimist, though, for planning purposes. I'd rather have us be a little bit conservative than not. Next slide. Capital expenses. Again, I've applied the 5% CPI against what we would expect to have been spending. One of the things we're working on up in our department, and we had an intern this summer who helped a lot with this, is we're starting to look at the actual required years for replacing different pieces of equipment. It'll help us better be able to plan our capital costs into the future. We're not quite there yet, but we've got, we're working on it. It's a process. Next. Okay, so you can see our budget allocations here. Our debt service is actually quite high. It's 13% of our budget in 2025. Our capital expenses stay right around 8%. Operations are generally 24%, 25%, regardless of what we do, and personnel is always our greatest percentage of our budget, which makes sense in an operation like a town because the most valuable resource we have is our people. And they do the work, they get things done, and they're a very large investment. And so that is consistent as you look year to year. Next, for '26. Okay, you see our debt service starting to back off as we start paying off a lot of the shorter-term borrowing here. With the bond anticipation notes, it's just over $1 million in '26, so that's starting to taper off. You can see in this one that Sewer 1 actually is paid off for the rolling for that year, and you'll see those starting to drop off as we go forward. Next slide. Personnel costs, again, we're over 18 at this point. One thing I would like to note at this point, none of the, I didn't account for any kind of retirements in any of this either. So I'm sure by the time we're getting up several more years, I know we have a number of people in Town Hall, we are starting to see some retirements, which is, it's both a good thing and a bad thing, right? So it helps the bottom line in terms of when we hire people in, newer people are starting at the bottom of the pay scale. Unfortunately, when we have people retire, they take a lot of knowledge with them. So there is a certain amount of turnover we'll expect over the next several years, but these costs do not reflect that at this point. Thank you. Okay, operational costs, again, this dropped to a 4% CPI assumption, so those are starting to steady out a little bit this year. Go ahead. And capital costs as well, dropped down the CPI to about a 4% increase as well. Next slide. You'll notice on the pie graphs, they don't shift around a whole lot. Our debt service drops down to 11% here, and you'll see that continue to drop over the next couple of years because that's dropping, personnel becomes a larger portion of the expenses, and capital and operations generally stay the same. Next slide. All right, '27. You can see, again, bands now were just over half a million. They're starting to drop off, which is excellent. We're getting those paid off. Bless you. Next slide. Personnel costs continuing. You could see, as they come up, we have additional contracts that'll need to be negotiated. So again, anytime there's nothing there, I just assume 2.5% purely for a numerical number to work with. Next slide. Operational costs, again, we're at 3% assumption on CPI at this point for both operational and capital costs as well. And the next slide. So you can see at this point, our debt service has dropped under 10%, and we're starting to steady out at that. Next slide. And then 2028. Again, we have, at this point, we will have paid off all the short-term rolling debt. We'll only have long-term debt that we're paying down at this point, so it drops off considerably. Next. Personnel costs continue to rise based on negotiated salaries. Again, the same assumptions with regard to retirement and 10% for health care. Next slide. Operationally, we're looking at a 3% CPI assumption. Next slide. And the same for capital expenses. Next slide. So you can see our debt service there. Once we've got those short-term rolls paid off, we're at about 7%, which is quite comfortable place to be. And the last slide. This is what actually is useful. We're looking at each year compared to the one before it. You can expect the personnel costs rise slowly and steadily, which is not a surprise. I don't think they'll be rising as much as that because we will see people retiring. We'll hire in people that are a little less expensive, so those should flatten out a little more than what that indicates. We do see the debt service decrease to the point where it's just the long-term debt in the last blue column there at the far-right section, and that's a nice place to have that. But in terms of operational and capital expenses, those are pretty steady going across, and I would expect that to be the case. The one thing that does get my attention and has me a little concerned is the big jump between 2024, this year, and 2025. The combination of what I think are still the high CPI rates that we've been seeing the last several years, the large amount of debt service that we're going to have to address next year, that is a considerable increase. So that's something we're going to be working on, and I know we've spoken also that the board would like to start weaning off of using as much fund balance to support the revenue. So that's going to be part of that calculus as well. So that's, there's going to be a lot going into the budget this year in terms of trying to balance that and get our expenses as contained as we can to that end. We may really have to think hard about capital expenses this year and exactly what has to be done this year and what can be deferred. So I'm already mentally thinking in that direction as well. So after this one big hiccup, though, it smoothes out a little bit, and I think it'll be, we'll be able to address that with minimal difficulty. So. Any questions?
I just want to thank you for putting that together. You know, I've been, you know, advocate for getting this together for a long time, and I really appreciate you doing it. I think that the information that you've put forward to the board now in a presentation format is going to be very helpful for all of us and also helpful for you and your, and the comptroller's office and that department to really, now you have a picture, right, of where things are and where we're going. So I think it's going to be very helpful for us going down the road. So thank you for doing that, Beth.
Yeah, absolutely.
One other thing I did want to point out or did ask about was the retirement increases. That fluctuates, and as you said, that's sort of mandated by the state, and often that is, has to do with what kind of return they're getting on their investments, correct? Some years, it's real good and the number gets down, but that is something that is not under our control.
Correct. And this is the largest jump we've seen. It actually was worse initially, then the initial numbers they gave us were considerably worse. I don't expect that to happen again based on what we're all seeing now with investments. I think those, if anything, they may back off a little bit again. I assume the worst, so I left it steady across. But yeah, this year was, it was quite a rude awakening when we initially got that invoice. So. Anybody else?
All right. Thank you, Beth. I appreciate it. Michelle, would you mind getting that out? Okay. We'll move on to committee reports.
Let me start with police and public safety?
Yes, we'll start with police and public safety. Thanks.
Police and public safety. We met on January 4th at 3:30. Under operations, we talked about the department had seven DWI arrests in the month of December. This was the most in a single month in the past 10 years. And chief especially called out Sergeant Chris Henry, who went to field sobriety instructor school and came back leading the charge with three of those arrests. So really proud of our department for that. For fleet and equipment, 605 is outfitted and it's all completed, and I saw it tonight when I pulled in the parking lot. Looks great. And we're also beginning the process to purchase two new vehicles. For training, we are completing our yearly training unit on procedural justice, and this is part of the accreditation process. Detective Munger and Officer Camanzo will be attending accident investigator school this month. And the police department sergeants, Anne Lieutenant Frenier, attended New York Law Practices and Procedures course on the 18th. This is like a legal updates course. This month, we are completing an in-service training unit on less-lethal weapons such as the teaser of a ton. And January 29th through 30th, Detective Munger will be attending drone indoor flight skills course through the Department of Homeland Security, and this is part of developing a county-wide drone program. For citizen correspondence, we have ongoing, with John Moak's request for us to reevaluate the stop sign at Windsor and Brier. And new correspondence was with Mark Gibbons. He called chief and asked for cameras to help curtail the speeding on Route 7. Mr. Gibbons ended up sending a letter to Assemblyman Steck regarding his request. For town events, we are continuing our coffee with a cop every third Tuesday of the month at the senior center. For the school district, the bus patrol installation is occurring this month and next month. For personnel, we're voting tonight on a permanent appointment of Cody Hansen. Cody joined us six months ago, and he's brought tons of positive energy to our department and to the team, and we're really excited. So for our resolutions tonight, we have a permanent appointment of a police officer. We're paying the annual Lexi Poll payment, and we're amending the parking on Plum Street. And our next meeting is February 1st at 3:30.
Thank you, Councilmember Brennan. Moving on to highway, parks, and recreation.
Thank you, Supervisor. We met January 4th at 8:00 a.m. We started our meeting with highway and parks. We discussed some work that the highway department did over of Seine ands. When we had a big rainstorm, we had some drainage issues over there, so highway worked with water and sewer, came up with some solutions, redesigning some grates and some intakes there. That was discussed at our meeting. Personnel-wise, we still have one vacancy in our parks department. Our parks department continues to do work in the parks. This was as of January. A little bit after that, when it snows, it gets a little bit harder, but they do continue to trim trees, doing some work in fieldstone estates. The work that we're doing over there has been funded by a grant that we received for those improvements. We discussed the Christmas tree pickup during January. Anybody that has live Christmas trees or Christmas trees that need to be recycled, they were putting, reminding the residents to put them out at the curbs for pickup. We discussed a title reclassification for an administrative secretary during our meeting. At the highway garage, we're working on our quotes for our purchases and materials for 2024. Again, you know, we have to get out in front of everything. If we think that something needs to be purchased, as Beth discussed, vehicles, trucks, or any sort of equipment, the lead times now are very long, very long for any kind of equipment and sometimes even materials. So Ray and his crew down there have done a good job keeping on top of that and getting out in front of it so that we can get the things that we need in a timely manner. During our open discussion part of the meeting, we discussed some, the county now has a new program, if you will, that's on the internet for us to do our intermunicipal contracts with them. We do some mowing for them, and so we discussed that and the renewal of that contract. And that was it for the highway and parks. Recreation-wise, we discussed assistant recreation director position, our facilities use manual, which has been updated. This is for all our facilities. We have residents that will rent our pavilions in our parks and other facilities like our senior center or our community center, and we've been working on that, and that has finally been completed. We have a resolution about independent contractors that get used at our different programs. Our senior program update, that's a very active department. We discussed their book club, the art vision boards. They were going to have a, on January 3rd, a live model art program down there. Also, they were going to have a speaker on how to retire with joy, and we discussed funding of meals and activity grants for their various programs that they have. And our next meeting is going to be February 1st at 8:00 a.m.
Thank you, Councilmember McPartlin. Moving on to water, sewer, and engineering.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. The Water, Sewer, and Engineering Committee met on Wednesday, January 3rd, and one of the biggest items on our agenda was the wastewater treatment plant, organic waste program. Our senior engineer, Dan Bulkey, has been working with local septic companies to see if we could utilize their waste at our plant, and I'm happy to share that this evening we will be voting on a resolution to enter into a contract with CNF Septic Service. CNF Septic is a local owner-operated company. Their trucks are small, so there won't be any disruption to the neighborhood. They'll now have a place to discharge their waste when they're working in Schenectady County, and we will be using their waste to generate gas, which will assist in powering our plant. This is a huge step as we work to make our plant more efficient, and I'd like to thank Matt, Dan, and Town Attorney Elena Finan for all of their work in preparing this contract for signatures. Another major topic that we discussed was the requirement imposed on local municipalities by the EPA and the state, requiring us to take an inventory of lead service lines throughout the town. This includes lines on private property and inside our residents' houses. Per the state guidelines, we have until October to complete this project, and we will begin community outreach on this shortly by mail and via the town's website. The plan for now is to set up a system on the town's website, which will allow residents to send a picture of the pipes inside their home to the water and sewer department so they can be identified. Residents who are unable to upload pictures will schedule a time for a member of the water and sewer department to come to their house and do a quick inspection and inventory. Our crews have already informally begun this inventory as they're taking note of what lines are comprised of when they're excavating on the scene of water main breaks or in residents' homes replacing meters. The goal here is to eventually, I'm sure, years down the road, eliminate all of the lead piping in the town. But like I said, for now, we're just trying to determine how much piping will need to be replaced, and again, a lot more information will be coming on that as the project begins. As far as resolutions this evening that I haven't already mentioned, we will be voting to authorize the water and sewer superintendent to purchase parts for repairs as needed throughout the year. authorized for a water main repair. Lastly, as a reminder to any of our residents who may be watching live, we currently have two open positions in the water and sewer department, and we encourage anyone who may be interested in becoming part of our team to review that posting on the town website and contact Superintendent Matt Yedo for more information and to apply. Going forward, our meetings will take place on the first Wednesday of every month at 8:30 in the morning upstairs in the Schaefer Room, and that makes our next meeting two weeks from tomorrow, which is Wednesday, February 7th. Unrelated to my committee or my committee report, I would just like to quickly thank our former town historian, Dr. Dennis Brennan, for his work and dedication in that role. As we know, over the last week or so, there has been quite a bit of turmoil related to his recent displacement. And so to assure that Dennis leaves the town on a good note and to ensure that he is properly recognized for his service, I take the position that this board should honor him also with a ceremonial resolution, and I look forward to discussing that in the coming days. And that is all I have, Supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moskowitz. That's great because the new town historian, Rita Augburn-McCall, was planning a ceremonial resolution for next month, so you can work directly with her as well as Deputy Supervisor Joe Drescher.
I'll help out with that all.
Thank you, Rita.
Oh, good. Thank you, Councilmember McPartlin. That's wonderful. Okay. And now moving on to the Economic Development, Historic Preservation, and Environmental Conservation Committee. That report will be given by our Deputy Supervisor Joe Drescher. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. On behalf of Councilman John Delarata, there's two resolutions before the board tonight, one awarding the contract for the greenhouse gas inventory and climate action plan, and a second awarding the contract for the second round of natural resource inventory. Both of these projects help make the town more resilient to climate change, and each helps protect our natural resources in its own way. These are important goals for the town, and we are thankful for, to the Conservation Advisory Council for taking up the reins of the Climate Smart Community Task Force to get these projects going. This month was busy for the planning board. They have been working on reviewing a subdivision at Seneca Road and River Road that has a lot of complicated drainage concerns and walkway connection issues, but they are approaching the finish line with this project. They also approved the school district offices to take over the old law offices next to the WRGB building, so there will be some exciting changes to that building in the coming months. The other big approval was the planning board approved Market 32 to take over the former Shoprite Plaza location. They are proposing a number of nice improvements to the plaza there, and they're being, we encourage anyone who hasn't looked at the planning board packets to do so. It will be a nice refresh, and we are very excited to welcome them to our town center. In other news, the Comprehensive Plan Committee released their RFP for a consultant to help work on the plan, so be on the lookout for a resolution for that next month. There also should be a survey released to residents soon to help them provide input and guide the plan. We thank all the residents who are already or will take the time to give us their input and how they want to shape the future of Niskuna. And the next committee meeting is Friday, February 2nd, at 8:30 a.m.
Thank you, Deputy Supervisor Drescher. I appreciate it. Okay. We'll move on to the supervisor's report. It's a bit of a lengthy one, so please buckle up and prepare yourself. It's our state of the town. I'll be reviewing a range of issues, and I will try to use my teacher voice and as engaging as possible. I'm honored to be here with you all tonight and have this opportunity to share some of our significant accomplishments in 2023, highlight the people who helped make them possible, and provide a bit of a roadmap for 2024. Starting with fiscal integrity and economic development. My administration is committed to making sound financial decisions and being good stewards of our tax dollars. We continue to utilize sound fiscal practices grounded in realities that support economic development, and we continue to aggressively pursue grant opportunities to augment our resources. One of the most important aspects of town government is the management of our finances, and I'm happy to report that our finances remain fiscally sound. We continue to maintain a healthy fund balance and make important investments in our workforce, infrastructure, and equipment. The 2024 budget stayed under the 2% tax cap and imposed a 0.5% increase to residential taxes while continuing to eliminate the use of short-term borrowing in response to those key factors, which include rising interest rates. The 2024 budget also reflects payment of our bond anticipation notes, our bands, from 2019 that were due, rather than rolling them into longer-term debt. So the big takeaways for 2023 are: We did not take on any new debt. It's the first time in many years. We used no short-term borrowing, especially because the interest rates were so high. In other words, we didn't use our credit cards to make purchases. Previous administrations used short-term borrowing to make capital purchases, which increased our debt. As Comptroller Greenwood explained, this debt is becoming a large portion of our overall costs, and we are paying down this debt and moving away from accruing any more short-term debt. We could have rolled the short-term debt into long-term debt, but that would be like refinancing your credit card debt into your 30-year home mortgage. Not a very wise decision. So we can either pay now or pay later, and we agree it's the right thing to pay now. Ending the short-term borrowing is a fiscal practice that had to end. And again, it's similar to using credit cards. Our short-term debt is similar to credit cards, while our long-term debt could be thought of as your mortgage. Our goal is to pay down our credit card debt and not take on any more, all while paying our mortgage and building up our savings. I think that's a goal we can all understand. It required tough but necessary decisions to have a small tax increase of 0.5% and use fund balance. Looking forward to 2024, because we are not borrowing and instead we are paying down debt, because the cost of business is increasing, in 2024, we will need to take a very hard look at how to operate more efficiently, reduce costs, and we may also need to consider raising taxes incrementally. Here's one example of creative thinking about costs. During our 2023 budget season, Councilmember Moskowitz offered the transfer station as a service in which the town should look at to reduce costs. And I have asked our Superintendent of Water, Sewer, and Engineering, Matt Yedo, to work with our town comptroller, Beth Greenwood, to conduct an updated cost-benefit analysis and make recommendations. This should happen at our next Water, Sewer, and Engineering meeting. Identifying efficiencies and reducing costs is one approach, but the reality is that the town has had no significant tax increase in 10 years, even as costs increased, in contrast to the school district, which has raised taxes every year for quite some time. Now, as an educator with over 20 years of experience and a parent, I understand that our children need and deserve a high-quality education, and this costs money. And I have supported the school budgets, resolutions, and calls for tax increases. Our residents also need to understand that the cost of business continues to increase each year for the town, and in order to continue providing the services that they have grown to enjoy and rely on, taxes may need to be increased. That's the hard truth. Or we could borrow more. Or we could cut costs and reduce services and reduce personnel. Those are the trade-offs. But I would like to remind you of the presentation that our town assessor, Eric Amberger, provided earlier this month at our Finance and Governance meeting. Only approximately 11% of our overall tax bill goes to the town. The bulk of those taxes go to the state, county, and Fire District 1 if you live in that district. Niskuna is a small-bedroom community that has a low tax, a low commercial tax base in comparison to some of our other municipalities like Latham, Colony, Bethlehem, Clifton Park. Keep in mind, we may look like an affluent community on paper, but we have a limited commercial tax base, and our residents do not want to have additional commercial businesses on Route 7. That's something that is under consideration as we revise the comprehensive plan this year. Overall, our goal is to continue to make progress toward a five-year budget planning process and start replenishing our savings so we can continue to have a robust rainy day fund. I also recommend we consider creating a capital fund to start saving for the construction of a new community center and town pool, and a reserve fund for the purchase of land that our residents want to preserve as green spaces. This is similar to what the town of Bethlehem has done. Again, we need to start planning for the future. This will take hard decisions. I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to acknowledge that our hometown company, Price Shopper, will be opening Market 32 in the former Shoprite location on Knott Street. This will be a practically seamless process, which is important for access to groceries as well as maintaining our commercial tax base. My goal is to make Niskuna's Knott Street our main street, and I am in conversation with Metroplex to help bring historic lighting, banners, and seating to this Knott Street corridor. Now with regard to the salary review, as I mentioned more than a year ago, I feel it's important to examine the salary and scope of the office of the supervisor and other elected town officials, which include town board members, town clerk, receiver of taxes, and town justices, to determine if those positions are competitive and in line with comparable municipalities. This is also in response to other elected officials requesting raises this year. Most of my colleagues on the town board and many residents agree this is an important issue to tackle. So I have entrusted the town comptroller, Beth Greenwood, with the creation of an independent committee in 2024 to study the issue and make recommendations for the town board to consider. The goal is for the committee to provide recommendations and have the opportunity to do the research, weigh all the considerations, and share their findings with the public. I believe this study will help ensure that Niskuna is always in the most capable hands, where voters can choose from the most top qualified candidates and not hope for the best. It should be noted that in 2021, a similar study have, has been conducted, and the committee will most likely be drawing upon those findings as they begin their analysis. Overall, I want to thank town comptroller Beth Greenwood and her staff, Assistant Town Comptroller Janet Nguyen, Frank Basil, Nancy Riley, and Margot Hashke for helping to prepare a fiscally sound and appropriate budget that was based on a five-year analysis of expenditures and revenues. I also want to thank the department heads for engaging in this collaborative process. Moving on to police and public safety. My administration is committed to supporting good policing and public safety. It's actually one of the highlights of being town supervisor. Our police department leadership, in collaboration with Councilmember Brennan and myself, worked very hard to implement many new policies, practices, and deliverables from the town's police reform initiative from 2023. The police department invested in new training and technology, all while keeping a focus on mental health, diversity, and equity. For the first time ever, our police department implemented body-worn cameras that were funded by grants. Our department leadership recruited, retained, and promoted a diverse group of officers, which strengthened our ranks by adding more women and officers of color to our team. The town's data analyst conducted a range of important analyses, including an updated racial bias audit, in line with Executive Order 203. The findings will be disseminated in the upcoming weeks. The analyst also conducted an administrative and staffing study to help us understand the needs of our community with regards to calls for service. Working collaboratively with the school district, Councilmember Brennan, and Chief Koshin, we were able to add stop-arm cameras to our buses. These cameras are currently being installed, and we anticipate the program to launch in March of 2024. We have worked to improve pedestrian safety and walkability in town with new sidewalks and crosswalks. In collaboration with our town planner, our Complete Streets Committee, we added a new sidewalk to Plum Street using our ADA compliance plan budgeted funds. And we also added new crosswalks to Upper Union Street and St. James Road, and this was funded by a critical pedestrian grant. In 2024, we are fast-tracking major initiatives to improve safety along roads in our town for our residents and others who drive, walk, and bike, especially along Route 7. In the past six months, we have made extraordinary progress in addressing critical safety concerns along Route 7. We convinced the State Department of Transportation to conduct a study and analysis of an especially dangerous section of Route 7. Plus, we conducted our own additional analyses, thanks to Detective Munger, and pushed back for more attention on the issue. We were especially concerned with the corridor from Bruman Road to Algonquin, where there have been a high number of fatal accidents and serious safety concerns. Our team, consisting of myself, town planner Laura Robertson, Chief Koshin, Detective Munger, Jim Levy, and Bill Chapman from our Complete Streets Committee, along with the engineers at Barton &amp; Le Judice, came up with a plan to make that stretch of Route 7 safer, and the New York State Department of Transportation encouraged us to apply for federal funding. We submitted the $4 million grant proposal on January 8th to make important infrastructure changes to Route 7. These changes include creating two crosswalks with traffic lights on Route 7 from the area between Bruman and Algonquin, medians to slow down traffic with wide landscapes, realignment of the entrance and exit from Bellevue Hospital, which increases the safety and commuting experience for our expecting and new parents from our local women's hospital and birthing center. Our team was so persuasive when we met with the New York State Department of Transportation that they agreed to pay 15% of the 20% matching amount that would have been the town's responsibility. So I'll put it plainly, the project, if funded, would be a $4 million infrastructure improvement in which the state of New York would contribute over $615,000, and the town would contribute a little over $200,000 to improve the safety and walkability of this portion of Route 7. Now, this portion that the town would be responsible for would be drawn from our ADA compliance plan funds, which are budgeted every year. This is mandated, and the town sets aside these funds every year to make improvements to sidewalks in order to be ADA compliant. As you recall, we improved, we added a sidewalk on Plum Street that was used that ADA compliance plan funds. So if awarded, we have the potential to get a $4 million grant where the state government pays $615,000 of that portion, and the town would pay $200,000, which we have already allocated in our budget for ADA compliance. It would be a game changer, and this is what good government looks like. We listened to our residents. They had major concerns about the safety of this corridor. That area in particular had many parents reach out because it's difficult for our school buses to traverse that intersection. because it's difficult for our school buses to traverse that intersection. We know that women with newborns are leaving Bellevue Hospital every single day with their most precious gift in tow, and that is a dangerous area. We worked with our state officials to collaborate on this project. We worked with the local businesses. We met with the leaders at Bellevue Hospital. And together, we identified solutions, and we applied for the funding. I pray we are awarded this grant, because I know it will make Route Seven safer, and it will help save lives. In collaboration with Chief Coshin, the police department has formed a Traffic and Community Engagement Division. This will further focus our energies on identified traffic areas. It will also address quality of life concerns throughout our community. We will have a focus on engaging our school district and our community. And we are meeting with our school district regularly, and we have a very strong and positive collaborative relationship. In 2024, our police department will be applying for and working to achieve accreditation through the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. To be frank, I was actually quite surprised our police department was not accredited when I took office and started really looking closely at our organization. And together with Chief Coshin, we made it a priority to set the structures in place. It actually taught, took a lot of forward thinking and planning. Staffing had to be adjusted, promotions had to be made, additional responsibilities had to be allocated to different members of the leadership team and also members of the police department. So it's been a long process over the last two years, and we are really close to submitting the application to be accredited. I want to thank Chief Coshin, Deputy Chief Twitty, and Lieutenant Freignay for all of their hard work and their leadership this year. And I, of course, look forward to our continued partnership in making our police department and our town an even better place to live. Thanks for making me a member of your team. I appreciate it. To wrap up, quality of life. My administration continues to invest in our parks, our green spaces, and our recreation areas. We want our residents to be able to relax and enjoy, spend time with their families and friends, engage in sports, and live their healthiest lives possible. Plus, we continue to protect and enhance our environment. A few key points from 2023. We made fast work of major improvements to River Road Park in 2023. In just 12 months from when we received grant funding at no cost to the taxpayer, we have a new inclusive playground, a new pavilion, and additional parking. I would like to point out that our inclusive playground was part of the work that was conducted by the Advisory Committee for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion that works directly with my office. This was one of the recommendations they made, and it was one of the first things we were able to get accomplished. In addition, we began to make improvements at Fieldstone Park, more specifically, making those trails more accessible for seniors and youth. And this was also in response to residents' concerns. Speaking of residents, we had Josh Bennett, Ashoke Ramsma-Berian, and Jennifer Lippman, who collaborated with Ray Smith, our Highway Superintendent, and Councilmember McPartlin to build new biking and hiking trails around the community center and the town pool. Yep, I said that. Town residents helped build new trails for us to use this summer. This project is a result of a grant, actually. It started with a natural resource inventory, and that inventory made recommendations that we use the space for trails. Building off of that, we worked collaboratively with department leads like Ray Smith and community members to build these new trails, and will be exciting to use them this summer. I'm also happy to share our wastewater treatment plant is processing organic waste. Again, thank you to Councilmember McPartlin for leading the way on that. Our goal is to become fully net zero and generate revenue so we can pay down capital debt for that project. In 2024, we will continue to make Niskuna an even better place to live, continuing trail improvements, completing the next phase of grant-funded projects at River Road Park by adding a splash pad with the goal to have that completed at the end of the summer in 2024, and install bathrooms and a concession stand in 2025. We will be putting out an RFP on future, actually, to replace the deck at the historic train station at Lyons Park, and I am working with our new town historian to write a grant for additional funding to support these improvements. I'm continuing to make progress with the transfer of the state's 100-acre Mohawk River State Park. And this will make the town, it'll be a big win. We'll have another great space that we will take care of, continue to be stewards of. It'll be a space for hiking, for mountain biking, who knows? Maybe I'll even make equestrian trails. Okay, no, I won't, but it's a thought. Overall, I think it's a big win, and I want to thank Councilmember De La Rada for helping me think through how to work with our state partners and continuing his ongoing commitment to our environment. Of course, I want to thank all of the department heads who worked together to make all of that work happen. Obviously, a big shout out to Superintendent Ray Smith, who's not only organizing the work, but doing the work on his backhoe. And, you know, he may or may not have let me try to work it. Okay, no, he didn't. I'm just kidding. But I've asked, and he said, no way. Community Programs Director Lori Peretti, she's a wonderful asset. We have our new Assistant Community Programs Director, Jean Fode. She's going to be working very hard with our youth sports programs. Our Senior Town Planner Laura Robertson, who's made easy work of grant writing. We couldn't do it without her. Assistant to the Town Planner Clark Henry, our Superintendent Water, Sewer, and Engineering, Matt Yedo, thank you again for all of your hard work. It's been a pleasure. You make a great team, and I'm honored to be a part of the magic. To wrap up, that was long, but there was a lot we've accomplished, and we've got a big list ahead of us. And I'm pretty confident we'll be able to knock it out of the park. I'm going to approach 2024 with great energy, excitement, and optimism, along with all the wisdom that I've gained from leading our town over the past two years. And I am committed to continuing leading positive change. Of course, none of this can happen without the hard work of our dedicated town board members, our talented department heads. I did not give a shout out to our town assessor, Eric Amberger. Thank you very much. Town Comptroller Beth Greenwood, Town Attorney Elena Finnan, thank you all for your hard work. I also want to thank our many residents and our volunteer boards for sharing their time, their expertise, and their commitment to our town. We have done a lot of really great work together, and I'm looking forward to what we can accomplish this year. I appreciate everyone who's helped make it a success, and I want to keep up the great work. Thank you. Not bad, team. Okay, aren't you glad that only happens once a year? Phew, me too. Let's move on to our resolutions. All right, we warmed up, we're ready to go. I'm looking at you, Town Clerk. You ready? All right. Let's start with Resolution Two Zero Two Four Dash Two Seven, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the Clerk please read?
A resolution appointing grounds workers in the Parks Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Two Zero Two Four Dash Two Eight, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the Clerk please read?
A resolution hiring additional employees in the town's Office of Community Programs.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number Two Zero Two Four Dash Two Nine, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz. Will the Clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a water and sewer maintenance worker in the town's Water and Sewer Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number Two Zero Two Four Dash Three Zero, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz. Will the Clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of parts from seawork equipment for pump station repairs.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number Two Zero Two Four Dash Three One, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the Clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing a contract with Schenectady County for mowing and maintenance at Grand Boulevard and Union Street for 2024.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number Two Zero Two Four Dash Three Two, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz. Will the Clerk please read?
A resolution amending Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Two Three Fifteen.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number Two Zero Two Four Dash Three Three, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Will the Clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing an annual payment to Leopold for police training procedures and manual costs.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number Two Zero Two Four Dash Three Four, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Will the Clerk please read?
A resolution permanently appointing a police officer to the town of Niskuna Police Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to say we're excited to welcome Cody Hanson as a permanent member of our department.
Yeah, he's a great, great addition to our team. All right, seeing no other discussion, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Bye-byes.
Resolution, the resolution passes. Resolution Number Two Zero Two Four Dash Three Five, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Will the Clerk please read?
A resolution in acting Local Law Number One of 2024 to amend Chapter Two Oh Three of the Code of the Town of Niskuna entitled Vehicle and Traffic.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number Two Zero Two Four Dash Three Six, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the Clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to execute a memorandum of agreement with CSCA bargaining unit regarding an additional addition of a senior real property clerk title.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number Two Zero Two Four Dash Three Seven, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the Clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a part-time deputy town attorney.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just want to welcome Chuck Cassini to this position, and I'm very happy, Elena, that this is happening. So he's been a town resident for a long time. I'm sure he's going to be very helpful to you.
All right, seeing no other discussion, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number Two Zero Two Four Dash Three Eight, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the Clerk please read?
A resolution reappointing members to the town's DEI Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank all these individuals who are willing to serve. Again, as you stated earlier, we have a lot of committees here and at the town, and these are volunteer, most of these positions. And really want to thank the people for putting their time and their talents to work for us here at the town.
Yes. I also want to thank them. We meet every month. They make many important recommendations, which I do my best to try and implement. And they work with department heads, you know, thinking through suggestions, particularly for our community programs, for our seniors and our youth. And I'm really thankful for their, their input. Seeing no other discussion, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number Two Zero Two Four Dash Three Nine, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the Clerk please read?
A resolution appointing an Executive Secretary One.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Well, I am going to say thank you, Patty Lester, for your years of dedication, hard work. Although I've only known you for the past two years, you are a godsend. You help field a lot of resident calls with questions, concerns, strong complaints sometimes, and you always handle them with professionalism, care, and a real passion for your job. This is a long overdue reclassification because the work she does far exceeds her current description, her current classification. And so I was more than happy to work with our town comptroller to help, you know, bring this classification, the civil service classification, forward and move Patty into this position.
Yes, I want to thank Patty for her service here at the town. And as you said, these are housekeeping items, but they need to be done. And it does take some effort. Thank you for taking care of that.
All right. No other discussion, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number Two Zero Two Four Dash Four Zero, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the Clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a real property clerk in the town assessor's office.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I would just like to say this appointment is in response to a retirement and a longstanding department member being promoted and moved into this position. This is a, you know, really great opportunity, and we're excited to, you know, to have our Assessor's Department continue to work well and have great people working there. So I just want to thank Eric for leading that department and just having a great staff. Every time I walk in there, it's nothing but smiles. All right, without any further discussion, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number Two Zero Two Four Dash Four One, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rada. Will the Clerk please read?
A resolution hiring a student worker for the town's Planning and Building Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I would just like to say Simran reached out to me looking for an internship. I read over her resume. She is an incredible young woman with an incredible future ahead of her. I reached out to a range of department heads and town hall who might have, you know, work that would be particularly suited to her background and her future interests. She has already served. She has already served as a student volunteer on our, one of our committees, I believe. That's what I thought, the Conservation Advisory Council. And so I'm incredibly happy to offer, to have this student come aboard, and I think she's going to make a great member of the Planning Department. All right, without any other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-42, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rada, will the clerk please read?
A resolution retaining professional engineering services on an as-needed basis for 2024 and setting their rates.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-43, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rada, will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing individuals to the Architectural Review Board.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
As we said before, thank you to these individuals for their service to the town on this board.
Yes. All right, seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-44, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni, will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing certain budgetary modifications.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Did I leave a 4-4? Yeah, we did that. Thank you. I got a text from Seth. I see you, Seth. Resolution number 2024-45, sponsored by Supervisor, nope, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rada, will the clerk please read?
A resolution recognizing the submittal of a TAP CM AQ CRP grant application for safety and complete streets treatment on Route 7 in the town of Niskuna.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? So this resolution is related to the Route 7 grant that I spent quite a bit of time discussing, and it's to acknowledge that the town would be contributing approximately $206,207, which is about 5% of the total project costs. And it should be noted again that these funds are annually budgeted as part of our ADA transition funds, which are, we are required to use and make improvements to sidewalks and become ADA compliant. And again, the New York State Department of Transportation would be contributing the remaining portion of the match, which would be $618,623. Overall, the grant is approximately $4.1 million if awarded. Is there any other discussion?
I'm very excited by this. I don't think there's been public outcry about an issue as much as the Route 7 issue. People worried about safety, the unfortunate deaths that have occurred. It's an issue that hits us all. It's a state road, but it is in Niskuna. We are on the streets, our children, our family, our friends are on the streets, and this needed to get problem solved, needed to have creative problem solving, and the fact that we have budgeted $200,000 for our ADA budget line, and then we are looking to get $4 million matched is unheard of. As someone who runs a nonprofit and is constantly looking for funding and looking for creative solutions, this is really outstanding, the fact that our own department heads, our own supervisor, our attorney, our state, and now we're going to the federal government to support this effort. It's gotten to the federal government because it's such an important issue, and we fought for what we need, and we're continuing to fight, and everyone's efforts are really appreciated. And on behalf of everyone, I'm really proud of the team here, so thank you.
All right, without any further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-46, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rada, will the clerk please read?
A resolution awarding Natural Resource Inventory, NRI, contract under New York State DEC Mohawk River Watershed Grant Program.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-47, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rada, will the clerk please read?
A resolution awarding a contract for greenhouse gas inventories and a government climate action plan for Niskuna Climate Smart Grant with New York State DEC.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-47, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rada, will the clerk please read?
So we just?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 4-7. You know what? I actually got distracted. My packet, I'm realizing. We're on 4-8. I'm sorry, 2024-48, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni, will the clerk please read?
A resolution accepting the financial report for the audit of the elected officials' accounts.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2024-49, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni, will the clerk please read?
A resolution approving an amendment to the fees provided for, in Chapter 69 of the Town Code of the Town of Niskuna.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
I'm sorry. Did I forget to ask for a second?
No, there was a second. There was never a request if there was any discussion.
Oh, was there any discussion? Oh.
So this is a resolution I've been struggling with and thinking about for several days. The resolution is to increase yard waste fees by only $3.